The regular meetings of the county council. Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've had a chance to read the minutes of the previous meetings, but your pleasure.
I make motion we accept the minutes of previous meeting.
Mark second it. Is there any question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Vote to carry. Is Shirley coming tonight?
I have no.
I have her here. We just barely got a call. I haven't got my pencil.
Okay. You have any mail, Deb?
Uh, no.
Alan, you got anything to say?
I do. I provided each of you a manila envelope with four documents in there. Nothing is for you to take any action on today, but these documents are in relation to the executive session we had in October concerning negotiations with an industrial development prospect. What you have is a proposal that was submitted and you have a couple agreements. You've got an ordinance to approve certain things, which again, there's no action going to be taken tonight. But the final thing you've got is a letter I received from the prospect at about 2:15 this afternoon in response to the proposal and just things for you to look at. It's obvious that some additional negotiations have to occur. That's all I have.
Okay. Barton, you got anything to say, Commissioner?
I...I repeat, uh...two items. One, we did renew the insurance contract this morning for the employees. Had an 18.6% rate because we can't sustain that very long. But it was time, our contract was up for us years, time to renew it. So we had to pull our belt next year or do something else.
18.6% rate?
18.6% because according to them, and I think they're right, we've had a...our loss was 185% of what our premiums was, so the insurance company's not going to sustain that very long.
You better call Obama.
That was for the past month, but it's bad overall.
But it's bad overall, so...
Yeah.
We did talk to consortium that is putting together insurance for different counties and cities, but they're just starting and so we thought we'd wait until see what kind of track record they had before. And then we'd do something next year if we have to, but we're gonna...cheese getting pretty binding on 18.6% raise. And that's gonna take, I think, a little bit more than what you've got budgeted. Right, Derek?
Yeah. We are...that is actually gonna be 59...the part that would come out of county general that we budgeted over in the COAT, the new COAT distributed shares funds. You put a million two in there and what it's actually gonna cost out of...for the county general employees, how...where it stands right now, we're gonna be $59,000 short. And then you also move $200,000 over into there for proper attorneys. We are not gonna have...so we are not gonna have enough money between...you budgeted a million four, we're only gonna receive a million, like a million three eighty-seven or so for net. Yeah, it's not quite...we're not gonna receive quite $2,400,000 that you budgeted for. We're gonna be short overall in the fund and we're gonna be short in that insurance appropriation. My suggestion, for one thing, to get us started, we don't even have enough to pay the first month's insurance plus the first month's proper attorney contracts. So my suggestion is to kind of prime the pump, perhaps using the December COAT and put it into that fund and that way we'll have...we'll have some funds in there and then we will be able to do an additional appropriation out of that. But I need to check with the DLGF and state board accounts and see if that...if I can do that.
Kick the can down?
Yeah.
But at any rate, you're gonna have to think next year we're gonna have to do something if you keep getting that kind of rate, you're gonna have to hire duck or less insurance or something, you know?
See, Mark, I told you.
The only other thing I've got is our new trip is supposed to be in the last, and this week we're first to next, so...
Well, they are.
Yeah.
Good. I'm sure glad we haven't had any snow, but now maybe we'll get some.
Well, maybe we'll get some to break them in. They're supposed to be...they're just about down with Kattonburg and they have to go up to freight line and be checked out again and then they'll bring them back down, which should be about the first of the week.
Thanks, Barton. Pete?
I apologize, I neglected to bring your copies of our report. Oh, they do have them? Okay, I'm sorry.
I think she was giving us something. What is it?
Did she give it to you? Okay.
Yeah, she gave it to us right here. We got...hey, that girl, she's all right.
She's on top of it, right?
She's on top of it.
Don't have a whole lot. Jim happened to be meeting with me last week when I received a call about project Neptune and the numbers that they gave us, their projections were pretty significant. I have to always say that no matter how close these projects are, they're not done until they're done. So, but while I'm not gonna share their numbers, or I can't share their numbers, would you agree that what you heard was pretty impressive?
If it happens.
Well, that's what I just said.
Dude, somebody's phoned to ring it.
Our project, one, is waiting for zoning and I think that meeting is on the 10th. If the board rules favorably on their rezoning request, I think the city will call a special meeting. Our goal is to get them to break ground before year end.
This year?
Yeah. They would have done it already, but we ran into a little problem on the zoning. Zone closed industrial, it needs to be changed to open industrial zone. And our project R, and again, I'm just highlighting those that are of significance today, is moving forward. The property owner and the prospective buyer are very close to an agreement and again, until it happens, it hasn't happened, but I think Jim and Barton both had an opportunity to meet with those people when they were here and...
Sounds like you've been pretty busy, Pete.
We have been busy.
Yeah.
We have been.
Sounds like you've been pretty busy.
Any questions? I will mention that I've been meeting and most of you have probably received a phone call. I know a lot of you question exactly what it is we do over there. So we've been taking time to sit down individually with everyone, kind of walk them through our whole process and how we handle things in the EDG office. Look forward to meeting with all of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I got a question. You're meeting with them individually, why could you set up with all of them being here at one time? Why wouldn't that be?
I mean, there's nothing to hide, it's just that on an individual basis, you might have quest...you might have a specific question. I asked before I began this process, some of the current council members and commissioners, their thoughts on individual meetings, to be able to go through records or whatever, and I was advised that that was a good idea. So is your position that that isn't a good idea?
Well, I mean, instead of you going through the same talk with seven or eight times, you could just do it all at once.
Part of it would be the open door policy.
That was gonna say, yeah.
That'll get him in trouble.
Well, it'll get me in trouble.
It'll get us in trouble, yes.
You're not having a meeting, you're just gathering information. Would that fall under the...
Yeah. Anytime there's a forum.
Well, and that depends on if you have sensitive information you want to share that you wouldn't want to share in this forum.
Yeah, and I do, and...
You could do three and three and one and you wouldn't have a forum in any of your...you know what I mean? You could break it up that way, something like that.
Okay, well, I'll leave that to you. I mean, if you would prefer meeting in a group, that's fine. Zane and I met last week and we had another productive meeting and Jim and I have met, met with Frank Jackson already. So I'll leave that up to you. If you prefer to meet in groups, that's fine with me. Just let Brandon know. Anything else?
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Old business. Is that where we better... I think we better get on to the health on old business. Where's she at?
She's hiding.
Are you calling me old? I already told everybody.
It's old business.
That I was over 65.
Lay it on us, Terry.
What do you want me to say?
Well, about Paula.
Oh, oh, well, that's actually new business, I would think, but okay, all right. There's a 144 in front of you. Carolyn, our public health nurse now, has...will be resigning come December 31st. We would like to see Paula Moppen, who has been with the department part-time immunizations and so forth like that for 16 years, so there's no training involved to be able to go into Carolyn's position. The starting salary for a public health nurse right now is at $25,900. Paula, part-time, we pay her $15.63 and she's allowed through a grant to work about 64 and a half hours. So if what the 144 is asking is to at least bring her up to what she's making now, not taking a cut, and she's gonna be working more hours too. If you notice on the public health appropriation for 2013, it's been approved for $36,050. Then I know that Paula will be taking the insurance, but when you did the budgets, from what I understand and can see is that you dropped Dr. White's health insurance, which amounted to $12,500, but that's all you dropped. But at the same time, when you did the budgets, you did away with Matt's position, but you didn't do away with his health insurance amount. So by moving Paula into public health nurse, the appropriation is there. We don't have to ask for anymore on that. I think the social security and the PERF, everything that was left alone, unemployment and unused sick leaves were left alone too. So... That's...on the other side of that paper that I gave you, is we would like to see Carolyn move into a part-time position through the grant like Paula's being paid right now. Her main duty, and we have a job description down the office, her main duty would be to help us continue getting credentialed and contracted with Medicaid insurance companies. Carolyn's...she started this, what, six months ago probably? She's been the ones that's...the one that has gone to the meetings. She's been the one who's signed her name. She's been the one that's kind of...is ramrodding this type thing and we don't want to lose that momentum because we don't have it done yet. I don't look for...the starting or the amount per hour that I'm looking at is what is the hourly rate that she would work now, is the 2064. I believe the starting rate is 1385.
Did we...I don't...yeah, it may have been. I'm trying to think what the starting rate is for that part-time.
I'm almost sure it's 1385.
You're right, it is 1385.
And I don't think Carolyn will work more...I know that she won't work more than 10 hours and a lot less than...a lot less than that. In this grant, we already have money set aside for an LPN to come in and help us on immunizations and so forth like that, so that's already in place. So...did you get that? But I think, you know, I think it's only fair that Paula not lose money by coming into a full-time position.
What's your plan? I'm not gonna be here, so you... Will you stop saying that? You lost me somewhere, Terry.
Okay.
Carolyn is resigning at the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
And you want to take your part-time nurse and put in her position?
Yes.
And if the part-time nurse takes the full-time nurse's position, she would be taking a pay cut?
Yes. Yes.
Correct.
Because right now she's paid 15...it's kind of on that little paper that...
Right here, it's on this paper.
1563. She's paid 1563.
1563 is what Paula was...what she's making now.
Right. And if she went to the starting salary of $25,900, that would work out to be 1487 an hour.
On full-time basis.
Full-time basis, right.
How many hours a year is Paula working now?
Well, the grant calls for no more than 64.5 hours a pay period. So we kept her right below, or a little bit below, full-time status. So we wouldn't have to pay benefit, we wouldn't have to offer insurance, we wouldn't have to, you know, offer PERF.
She worked like 32 hours a week then?
Approximately, yeah. Yeah. And she handles our tobacco. She does the...helps with immunizations, does the posting for immunizations and so forth like that, so we probably would have another nurse come in. We do have another nurse that comes in every clinic, which is three times a month. We probably would have her come in, maybe even an extra day or so, just to help us with the posting and so forth like that. But that's already taken...that's already taken care of. That nurse there is already taken care of.
Okay, how does this compare to what Carolyn is making now?
Well, right down there, it tells you the public health nurse appropriation.
3650.
For 2013, and this has been without a raise for two years, two, three years, something like...is 3650.
3650. And then by your calculation, if we approve this 144 as you've got it written up, that amount would go to 27230.
That's correct.
Now, Carolyn is...she is a nurse, registered nurse.
Carolyn is a RN. Paula is an LPN.
LPN, okay.
But qualifications for the state department of health, it just says a nurse and Paula's a nurse.
Well, I just answered the question.
Yeah. So there's, you know, this is something that we don't have to have. And then kind of on the other hand too, that's why on this parent...Carolyn as consultant gives us the benefit of an RN to this Medicaid program, which is an advantage. And that's not the only thing she would consult on, you know?
Terry, do we have the...do we have the grant for 2013 that Paula works out of? So we have that grant? That's already been approved?
Yeah, I think you're gonna approve it tonight, although it will need a...if you approve Carolyn, that'll need amended, I know.
Okay, now that grant there, can we use that for some of that money for...to pay Carolyn or pay the RN?
That was where she would be paid for.
That Carolyn would be paid from the grant.
From the grant.
Yeah.
And we would be paying social security and unemployment. And you didn't reduce our...well, yeah, I think you did reduce our social security sum.
Okay. Now also, could that grant also be used for the part-timer coming in to help, we'll say Paula?
Oh, yeah, and that's already in there. It's in there, yeah.
So then from the starting salary that has been approved, appropriated for the $36,000 down to 27, we're $7,000 cheaper there.
Right.
Plus we got Dr. White's insurance, which is $12,000. Is that that close or something like that?
12.5. I think it was 12.5.
So we're looking at 29 there.
Now Carolyn, did you have health insurance or not?
I did. So...
I was just trying to get an idea of whether that would be a wash.
Yeah, so...
And we may have to look. We may not have enough in there because our health insurance went up.
Right, but at this time, I knew nothing of that. I know nothing.
Yeah.
Will Carolyn be able to keep her health insurance? She'd be part-time?
No, no, no.
She would probably go to her new employer for that.
So Carolyn, after you...after you leave at the end of the year, you're gonna come back as part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. She just can't leave us, actually. We...she just...
Yeah, she just can't, yeah.
It would be nice to see that program finished up and be able to get those Medicaid reimbursements going.
Oh, if we have to start all over, it's gonna be a disaster.
I know that's gonna be...
We had to redo names and everything, because I know with Medicare, if I have to redo a name like Dr. White, another health officer, it's in my name, get that changed. And like we say, she...I doubt that she works five hours a week maybe, if that.
Just to get this going, I'll continue to do the home visiting that I do. I don't wanna leave that. Other reasons to keep a registered nurse online, especially one with a bachelor's degree, is that there are grant opportunities that come along from the state department of health and, you know, if I can sign off on those, accreditation that's coming to all the health departments, you know, if you can say you have a registered nurse on staff, it looks better for grant opportunities for money that can funnel in from other places for us to do other programming. So there are benefits and Paula, with her experience, is completely capable of doing the job of the public health nurse, so I feel really good about that. I'm kind of...I don't want to leave this project in the middle, but I think that it's gonna be really good for generating revenue and having another place for kids to come and get their shots and keeping their home, you know, their shot home here where they've been forever, so...
I think by moving Paula into Carolyn's job, we'll save about $80, $800, $200 a year.
Yeah, it'll definitely save the county money.
Right.
Definitely. And to keep her where she is, sovereign wise, she's...she has worked here for 16 years. I mean, all of us at the health department have been here forever. You haven't seen, you know, the turnover and things that maybe in other departments. So to reward her for that longevity, I think is, you know, to not cut her off a denise and this is a good thing for her. This is a kind of a career advancement for her, a boost, and I think that she should definitely be rewarded for that and not, you know... And if we want to revisit what other LPNs, what other RNs make in other fields, I think it would be very...I don't mean that you guys are getting...the county itself is getting quite a bargain for what our salary is for our experience.
Well, I can see the unique circumstance of this situation. We have...since I've been here, we've never had something quite like this come up.
Well, we didn't get Terry stirred up, but after we got her stirred up, you see what we got.
Yeah, we got a lot of trouble.
Yeah, we did.
But this still...this goes against the statement of starting salaries that we've had in place all along.
I think you really need to look at the starting salary for nurses, because the starting salary where it is now, where it has been set and where it was when I came here, was borderline insulting as to what the degree is worth. And to keep her at her rate that she's at now is fair, and I don't think that anyone who looks at her experience and what the health department offers in the way of public health, you know, they're not gonna...they're not gonna disagree that she should stay where she's at as far as her hourly rate.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue that point with you at all. What I'm wondering is, are we changing...are we changing the starting salary for nurse at the health department or are we making a special exception that down the road, other departments and offices are gonna ask for the same consideration?
We need to think of what you're dealing with, because you're dealing with a nurse with a special degree. You're not dealing with anything...you would be comparing it to something totally different. You need to consider what it is in the context of where it is. So you're not looking from employee to employee to employee. You're looking at a degreed individual in public health.
Well, I don't know.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
So whatever you guys need to do to make that fair to her and in that position and what she's doing, then I think you can do that, however it is you get to that. And it's okay, you know, it's okay to change policies based on what's fair.
I'd like you to explain that to the rest of the courthouse employees for me.
But that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we get hammered pretty hard sometimes.
And that is...that's true. That's the position that...it's kind of the position that you're in, is to explain the logic behind some of the decisions that you make. the logic behind some of the decisions that, that you make.
Russ, I hate to put you on the spot, but we've had, we've had serious discussions in the past about starting salaries.
I've been, I've been an advocate of the starting salaries. I think our starting salaries are terrible, but just like what she said here, we went, we did this, we changed the thing over there, which is paid by a grant, and we changed our starting salary for the adult probation types, but that, that got changed.
Community corrections.
Qualified people that was taking over that position, as I was told.
Well, and we're not asking for Paula to make the thirty-six five.
Right, but what, if we change this, this starting salary, we amend our starting salary, then we have a part-time LPN starting salary, do we, Debbie?
Do what now?
Do we have a LPN starting salary?
Well, it does not say LPN.
No.
It just, it's, well, it says a nurse, but the starting salary is thirteen eighty-five.
Doesn't say if it's an RN or if it's an LPN.
It doesn't specify.
Or whatever.
It says the starting salary for a part-time employee.
Terry, my question is now, now we're going to have another start, we have to have another starting salary because we're going to take Carolyn as an RN.
Right, that's true, that's true.
So we'll have three starting salaries, one full-time for, for a nurse for the health department, then we'll have a, a starting salary for part-time LPN or whatever you want to call it.
Or whatever, right.
And then we, we have an RN now, that's going to be a part-time RN that we've never had before. So we have to have another starting salary for that.
It would have to be, you have, I have the grant one forty-fours and all to be approved tonight. You could put that in there and then you have it in place for next year.
Right.
This wouldn't go in. But you're right, I mean, all of the, I mean, all of the starting salaries do need review, but then you also have the problem of if you raise them very much, then they're, then people are going to start out making more than what some of the people already working here make.
Exactly.
It, it's a whole dilemma of what, what you're going to do going forward. And I agree, they're woefully, you know.
You've got to remember, you haven't got any money.
But, you know, you realize too, we put deputies on the road.
Well, we raised your tax, Ronnie, I don't, we'll get a little bit more, won't we?
Forty, forty hours a week starting out at less than that, twenty-five, what is it?
From, from our, our starting salary here, we have a starting salary of twenty-five something.
Twenty-five nine.
Twenty-five nine, and we're talking about rates of twenty-seven.
Two-thirty.
Twenty-seven, two-thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, where are we looking at there?
We're talking about keeping her at her hourly rate.
Uh-huh.
We're talking about keeping her at her hourly rate that she currently works.
No, we, we started, Carolyn, we started, if we have a starting salary, we, we're not going, well, you had to figure it out by the hour rate, yeah. That's another problem we have. We have a starting salary that's twenty, twenty-nine or twenty-seven something, and then we try to figure it into an hourly rate, which we need, we either need to go with an hourly rate or we don't need to go with a total of twenty-nine thousand or whatever. That's, that's another thing that we run into.
Yeah.
If we're going to figure this, this new nurse on a hourly basis, then our starting salary needs to say hourly base instead of a total of twenty-seven nine. But then we run into the problem of overtime, if we go with an hour.
We've never.
No, we never, but we can run into that problem.
Are you kidding? We went through H1 and 1 and didn't.
No, I'm talking about Carolyn, if, in the future, if we change these salaries, what I'm saying is we go in the future.
It's in the handbook, we can't have overtime.
Can't have overtime?
Only, unless, unless you have it appropriated, because there are some departments that do have it. We don't have, we currently do not have any full-time employees that are listing, that are listed at an hourly rate. They all have a salary. And now, if they work overtime, like the jail, the road division, community corrections or nine-one-one, then they get paid, you know, we divide out that.
Right, I understand what that is. Our department has never utilized overtime since.
So I just assume, I would, if we're going to, if we're going to amend the salary, I think we need to go with the totals, the total salary, that's instead of figuring it out by hourly, but it's going to figure out to her, her.
Whatever's, whatever you guys can do.
Fifteen sixty-three.
Yeah, right.
Right now, part-time Paula makes fifteen sixty-three?
Yes, she's been here for sixteen years. We all started with those woeful starting salaries.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, here, they want to take it down to fourteen eighty-seven if you do twenty-five nine hundred. No.
That's what she makes now.
That's what she make, that's what they're making now.
That's what she, she's saying at this, at the current starting salary of twenty-five nine, she'd be making fourteen eighty-seven an hour, and she's making fifteen sixty-three right now.
So we'd have to start with twenty-seven, two-thirty.
As a, as a part-time.
That depends on how many hours per pay period you're considering.
Well, it's thirty-three and a half hours a week, just like, you know, that's full-time.
Now, how many hours is she working part-time?
Well, she's just shy of that because we kept her down that, down so we wouldn't have to pay benefits. She's like half an hour short of working all of those hours now, which is why it's a pay cut for her to go full-time at that rate that is set now.
The only, the only thing she's picking up, she's picking up some benefits out.
Yes, but she's ignoring mine, but, you know, the line item that's in there of mine. So you're saving the, you know, what my rate is subtracted from what hers is.
Well, now, if Paula's going, are you, are you planning on taking the insurance and stuff, too? You've got to, now she don't have it, so you've got to figure that out.
No, Carolyn has insurance.
Mine will go, my line item will transfer to hers. That's a wash.
Yeah.
Carolyn, when you come back as part-time, what will be your pay rate?
Well, that's the next point, is that I would like to keep my hourly rate paid out of that grant that Paula was paid out of. The local health maintenance, tobacco settlement type thing. Which actually then, because I'm not going to be working the amount of hours that Paula is working currently, we won't be drawing from that grant salary-wise like we are now. I don't plan to be in here any more than three hours a week. I, I just don't. I can't.
Okay, now if you came back as part-time, working thirty-two hours a week.
No, I can't.
That would be.
Can't do it. Not enough hours in the day.
And really, that's the way, like I said, we have a job description down in the office that we've, we've made for this position, and the job description would even limit the hours, because it wouldn't be there, the work wouldn't be there.
It's quite specific. It's not broad, like the job descriptions for Paula and my other health that comes in online space. It's very specific to the position of getting that Medicaid/Medicare insurance billing project off the ground so that we can start generating revenue. It still has the things in there about, I would be available for mass clinics, bio-terrorism, dispensing, you know, medication dispensing. I would still be kind of on the line for, to draw from somebody to try to help with those clinics, but I would be anyway as a part-timer. But that's in the event of a, of a bio-terrorist flu pandemic, something like that.
I've got a better, better picture of the situation now than I did before I came in here today.
It's actually kind of good news, I mean, really. We're swapping positions, I'm taking way less hours, way less money out of that grant, Paula is taking less money from that salary line item that I had, and the rest of it is insurance package, benefits per, things like that are, are even with what is currently budgeted for 2013.
Terry, what's, what's the starting salary in that grant for replacement for Paula?
It'd be thirteen eighty-five.
Thirteen eighty-five.
And this is a new, kind of new description of services that aren't in there currently. Like in Paula's job description says nothing about, you know, Medicare/Medicaid billing and someone like that.
All total, are we going to be setting two salaries or three?
Three.
Why three?
Well, you're, you're changing Paula's and your, and the one that's coming in in her place.
Well, nobody's coming in in Paula's place.
We have a starting salary for.
Then tell them they're.
No, at the end of the grant.
It's in the grant, and it would be if we hired someone new, which we probably are not going to, we're going to use the LPN that we, we have been using.
But you said a while ago, Terry, that's what I picked up on.
I know, you pick up on silly stuff.
Your silly, your dollar and cents, honey, that's what I'm picking up on.
If this isn't happening, and I mean, if, if Paula won't be going in this job until January one, then I would suggest we go ahead and change the one forty-fours that you're going to approve tonight, rather than have one that has Carolyn in it and then do another one. We can just cross that out and put a different salary in. So I would suggest you do that, and we have it all on one, one forty-four that's current right now, rather than.
It's the two salaries.
Yeah.
You're saying we're going to amend that, our original salary for a nurse in the health department?
Well, just whatever you decide tonight, we'll, we'll put it in there.
And then the starting salary for a part-time RN?
Well, but they said they won't have a new, oh, yeah, right, no, I'm sorry. You would have to add that to the local health maintenance grant, one forty-four for them. So maybe you could do that one with the one, I think you just added that one on here, didn't you, Terry?
I have, yeah.
What you're playing on, it must be, it can't happen, no.
Well, whatever, whatever we do, I, I'd like to see it done in a way that it's like all other, like, like the, spelled out the salary ordinance, that whoever comes along after us, whoever comes along after Terry knows what the salaries are, because this, the way it is, I can see whoever comes in after you, Terry, or whoever comes on council next is going, or whoever comes after Debbie is going to have a hard time figuring this out, the way we're, the way it's presented here, the way I look at it.
Well, you know, we've never had.
I think the way we're going to present this is that our nurse's salary is we're going to amend it, isn't that the way I understand that?
You could do two things, we have two things that are coming up later in the agenda. And one thing is going to approve the current one forty-fours, what people make right now. And then the second thing, and per what you approved in the budget, the second thing is you're going to approve a starting salary ordinance. So I think you need to decide, are you going to change that starting salary ordinance to what they're proposing to put in? Are you going to make a special exception to put her in at the higher rate and just change the one forty-four? Then that means that any other, if for whatever happened.
Start back at this salary.
Paula hit the lottery or something and didn't want to work here, then you, you know, then you go back and you do have a salary ordinance that's the twenty-five nine.
Yeah.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of following Carolyn here that in one sense, I think it's a slap in the face for your RN or whatever, to take a salary like we're giving of twenty-five thousand, which we're not going to get or not.
No, you won't. You'll be very hard pressed to find somebody now who would do that.
Yeah, the way, the way the medical field is going, there's no doubt about it.
And, and I think if, if it makes you feel any better, you're looking at people who have been at that department at the minimum of fifteen years and three months, that's the, that's the last time, full-time people, you know, have been there. And even with part-timers, you're looking at people who've been there more than ten years. We're, we're solid and we're good and I don't, I think if, you know, as long as the, the momentum stays the way it is, the working relationships stay the way they are, you're not going to be revisiting, you know, you're, we're not going to be here talking about this.
So what you're saying, Dave, is if we amend that to the starting salary, then the next people that come in, that's what the starting salary is going to be, it ain't going to be a, well, they, they give a special exemption here and a special exemption there. So I think we need to amend it if we're going to do it.
I agree with you.
Hold the other factor in there that we haven't really talked about, but the insurance. I mean, we're not, we're not really comparing apples to apples, we're trying to compare apples to oranges, if you throw the insurance in.
No, Paula is, Paula would take the same level of insurance that Carolyn would take.
I understand that you have at this moment.
Right.
Yes, so she doesn't have insurance at this moment.
No.
No, but she does, but you are not going to, she isn't going to have hers with the county at the end of the year.
Yes, I understand that, so, you know, help me, because I'm trying to, to understand the difference between the salary ordinance. Would it not make a difference on approving every salary ordinance that we do, is whether or not that person is or isn't going to be, have benefits?
I think, no, you can't do that, that's discriminatory, I believe. You, you can't, I mean, I, I, tell me, Alan, am I correct there?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I'd have to.
I've never seen an employer make a difference in the salaries of employees based upon whether they take the insurance or not.
No, no, it, it should not, it should not at all be a factor. What it is, because you shouldn't even be, if you're interviewing someone new for a job and you come in and hire them, the only time when you find out whether they're going to have health insurance is after you've employed them and they fill out, they fill out their benefit package, that's all.
It goes back to our handbook though, too, because we got, you can jump on the insurance program as soon as you're hired, if you're full-time.
And we have people change, right now's the open enrollment period, and, and we may have people changing, you know, their insurance. They may have not have taken it and may need to, and it's more fluid than any of the other things, because we have to allow for those adjustments.
Well, I understand that, but I think, speaking for myself, if I were going out and knocking on someone's door to ask for a job, I would want to know before I made the decision whether benefits.
Benefits were available, but I don't think that that can be a criteria for hiring someone.
No, and I, I didn't intend to make it a criteria for hiring someone at all.
Whether they do or don't.
I'm just saying that that, that certainly should, is a consideration when it's a salary, a starting salary.
Probably, we're, we're looking right now at a family plan insurance, the county's cost being around twenty thousand dollars a year. And it is, it, I mean, you know, but that's the other side of trying to, trying to keep our insurance plan at the levels that have been, have been out, because we've taken into consideration that the employees are typically lower paid than they are out in another part of the industry, so.
So let me ask the question, Debbie, then, about the part-timer, which is going to be a new ordinance, salary ordinance?
It would be on the local health maintenance grant. So what you would do, you would just add a line to her current local health maintenance grant and just put in a line for part-time at that level.
But specify RN.
I think you would, you would want to. I, I really do think you would want to.
And Russ, we, we've got right hand in front of us tonight, the 2013 salary ordinance that's to be, supposed to be approved tonight or this month. And it lists the starting salary for county nurse at twenty-five nine, and the starting salary for a nurse who's a local health man at thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents an hour.
That's starting salary, yeah.
Starting salary. So we're either going to have to amend this before we approve it.
We've got to add a line on it, because we're, we're talking about an RN here that's been with us, and so now we're, we're going back to that health grant, but if we hire a new, or a new person comes in on that grant, if Terry, and they have a clinic or something that they have to pick up another nurse, an LPN or whatever, we don't want to put her at the RN's pay.
No, and that, that already is in, in the appropriate, in the starting. And the other nurse that works down there under the grant, she's going to still make what her current hourly rate is, which is higher than the starting, because she's, she's had raises through the years.
I think at this point Carolyn's part-time, asking. I think at this point Carolyn's part-time asking for part-time is a little unique, because it's more consulting and home visits. And we can put that, I mean, you could put that down there on the 144, consulting.
See, that's a different issue, some of that has to be put in there, otherwise the girl-
You can make it more specific.
Or the guy that we hired on that grant at 13.84 is going to pick up the price of 15.80, whatever.
Well, they pick up-
Is that right?
They pick up to 13.85.
Yeah, well, they would, but if we don't put that in there like that, then the person coming in on board is going to pick up the 15.80, or the 13 something.
Right.
I would list it as RN consultant is our list.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's more specific, because-
Terry, I've got to congratulate you, because you're very, you couldn't have timed this whole thing any better than to cause more confusion.
I know.
It's as clear as a nail to the head.
Yay for the end of the year.
We're living this.
Both of you, you waited till the end of the year to throw this-
Yeah, we were kind of talking about, you know.
Some earlier decisions by council, I guess, made my decision for you.
Well, I can tell you where to go, I can tell you where to go and get her, maybe she won't get heard.
It's too late, right?
Somebody's trying to, was it too late?
Okay, well, she's already signed on the dotted line, why is there nothing we can do about that, I guess? All right, I'll defer to the county auditor, what's the right way to do this?
Now, how Debbie mentioned that before made sense to me.
Well, and that is actually how it was written up. Registered nurse slash Medicaid coordinator, PHN consultant, is how you put it on here.
That's right, yes.
You already did.
Didn't you read my own?
And we can add this, we can add this to the regular, not make a separate document of it and have you sign something else, we'll just add this to the 144 you're going to approve tonight. Until you approve them, we can still make changes, you know. What you have is just things written down, we can make changes to those ordinances up until the sign, finally vote on.
Okay, so are we going to have to amend the salary ordinance?
If you're going to set a new starting salary, you will.
That's what I thought.
And we can also amend the, amend the 144.
That's, you're just talking about that.
The one that includes our, yes, right, the one for the health department, 213.
Yeah, you're just talking about the health.
Yeah.
Well, let's play, we got to get off a dead center, guys, let's go. What's your, what do you want to do? Don't everybody's paper wants? Well, I'm sympathetic to the situation, I understand now what's going on there. I'm just trying to figure out how to amend both the 144s and the salary ordinance tonight. Get everything, get everything right, because after the first year, if we don't have it right, it's not going to work right. She? Terry, I wish you came in here with this three months ago.
I wish I'd known about it three months ago.
Well.
I mean, really, and really, we have not had to revisit our starting salaries, because we are so steady at the health department, we were just extremely steady people or positions. So we've never had to revisit it, or we would have been up here arguing, you know, talking about it ahead of time, but the circumstance came up to where, sorry, it happened in November and December.
I think, Terry, you shouldn't start, I feel like you ought to leave the starting salary alone and just make a spatial exception in Paula's case.
You set, you're going to start it all through the courthouse.
I can't see Paula getting cut, because she's making 15.63 an hour now, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
I can't see cutting her, I mean, that's what she's making now. Can I make a motion, I'm going to get, probably, she'll run her own for it, another courthouse boy, but she's making 15.63, I can't see her getting cut, so I'll make a motion, we keep her at 15.63 on this new job.
And make a spatial exception on the 144.
It needs to be done as a, I don't, we can't put it in as hourly rate, you need to put it in as a salary, which is what Carrie's projected.
27,000, 230.
27, 230.
230, because she'd be going back.
So are you approving the 140, to add her in at 144, to have her starting salary, but you haven't addressed the new starting salary in this salary?
We're not changing the starting salary.
You're just doing hers, okay.
We're just doing hers.
Okay.
How much time she got in that department?
16 years.
16 years.
She's been there 16 years?
Yes.
I don't think she's that old, but she's been there. I can't see cutting her.
So you're making the motion to just-
Keep her at a starting rate of 27.
Not change the salary, you're going to make an amendment to it as a special exception?
Just this case only. This case only, her experience. We got a motion, we got a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mark, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. I'll leave you alone now, if you'll let us alone. I'll leave you alone if you guys leave us alone.
Oh, wait, oh.
We got another one, don't we?
We didn't.
Oh.
We got, uh.
This one, that we can add this to the others, you don't have to sign it twice.
So when your next bunch comes in?
The local health maintenance.
Now, we need a motion to do, to raise, we're going from 13.85 to 20.64, is that right?
That which is my currently hourly rate.
Huh?
No, we're not going to change, we're just going to add, we would add a line here that said this, registered nurse, Medicaid coordinator, PHN consultant, at 20.64 an hour.
You know, Rasta, if the history of us being here as long as we have been here, if, you know, Paula Stacey retires out of here, we'll all be long gone.
We'll all be long gone. And the next, you say the next bunch is going to be, is going to look at it and go, what?
We need to add, we've got to make a motion, okay. We've got to add-
That, what she, did she ever give you that? Need to add that to the bottom line on the local health.
You need to add this, registered nurse, Medicaid coordinator, PHN consultant.
That's for her, that's for Karen.
That's for Karen. I got some questions to ask Carolyn, how much you make an hour now?
That's what she makes an hour.
20.64?
Yes.
And your new job's coordinator, you going to make house visits?
I still do. I just don't want to leave my clients, who I've been with or who I've been around.
Okay, let me ask you a question, you use your own vehicle, right?
I do.
You charge mileage or anything?
I haven't been for years.
Okay. You want to make a motion to that, then? I'll probably get killed later on, I'll make a motion that we don't cut her.
Could you kick in the gas?
I'll buy a tank of gas, if you want a tank of gas.
You know, that can be paid, it's, you know, I just haven't turned it in.
He's got to think about gas.
Oh, he does, yeah, well.
Well, then you got to keep your act out.
You got a motion, you got a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We got to get off a dead center. Now, we got to add that to this, right, Gary?
Yeah, I need to do that one.
Can we save $8,000? Are we done, Terry?
You're done.
Good. Now, under old business, and I already told Terry about it, it's up to you guys, what, on the, you reinstated Matt, what are you going to do about the part-time help? You going to keep it, or are you going to, I thought it was our intention to do away with the part-time help, but it's up, you guys-
That was my understanding as well, Ron.
I slipped, I didn't say nothing about that in the last meeting, I slipped, I should have said something, but I didn't. So it's up to you guys, you're going to have, make a motion or what you want to do.
I don't recall the part-time help even being discussed last month.
We didn't, we didn't.
No, we didn't discuss it, but we just took it for granted that we was going to, when we reinstated Matt, that we would do away with the part-time, it was mentioned in the meeting.
It was mentioned, and it was mentioned specifically that we thought that the different department management would make that decision, what particular position had to-
Terry, what's the chance that you run the numbers on that budget again, before we jump the boat again?
I can probably do that. I have one other-
That can be brought in anytime, can't it?
Right now, the way it stands, you didn't take it out, so going forward, come January 1, you have it in there, so.
Okay, but we don't know how bad that's going to hurt that vote.
Yeah, I am, I will just say, I am just concerned about your fund balances being, have been so low this year. I've really been concerned about that.
It was low in the spring, and now I asked for an advanced draw, but I've got 23, no, I've got more than that.
40 or 40.
I've got 44,000 to come in on flu and pneumonia billing. I've gotten some of it, so I really think that there's probably at least 20,000 to 25,000 that hasn't been paid yet. So once that, and then, of course, we have to buy the vaccine, and that's always in, the end of July, August, we get the vaccine in, and you're talking, you know, 24,000, $25,000. So that makes the fund go down, of course it does. And then it takes a while before we start our flu clinics and we bring, start bringing the money back in. So, but with the Medicare billing, we make 20, a little bit over $22 in just an administration fee that we accept, we accept from them. So, yeah, our cash balances are low, but they're going to come right back up, too.
You're not concerned about it?
I'm really not concerned about it, no, I'm not, I'm not, and, you know, I, we can always, if we see where we're getting really badly in trouble, I don't think John would mind cutting his hours some. What, when it first started out, is the food sanitarium, the county council guaranteed us 20 hours a week. And they've never funded the 20 hours, every time we come back in, it's been cut, so it's never been totally funded, and we have worked within that. So, I, no, I'm not, I'm really not concerned, I think by the time that, well, I know this insurance is going up, I know that, you know, but there's some other things that, that $50,000 there in vaccines, we're going to bring back in. It's not costing us $50,000, because we're going to get it back plus some. So, in fact, I've always said that, that fund is almost one of these that you need to set up like a little cheppy account instead, you know, you pay your bills out, and we put your money until we see you in it, and has nothing to do with our budget.
Oh, stand-alone for the immunization.
I'm sorry.
You mean standalone for the immunization.
Yeah, standalone for the flu and pneumonia and the vaccine.
Because, I mean, the fund balances have been running 17, 18, 14,000, and you're just, luckily you have other fees collected monthly that have been pushing that along, but I had, you know, I mean, we did an advanced draw in the, in the spring, we did an advanced draw. To me, that's just kind of a warning sign that you're not having enough to run the department. I mean, you know, to do what you need to do at the current budget.
But I figured the third one is going to come in probably after the first year, it really should have come in by now. It really should have, because I got right on that Medicare billing, and so-
If there is some way that we can set up a standalone for immunizations, that would really be great when we start billing insurances, because we're going to have to purchase privately all of those vaccines for kids, for those who carry insurance. With Medicaid and the uninsured, we can get it for free from the state department of health. So it might be really nice to sit down and figure out how we can do that, put our flu and pneumonia and regular immunizations into that fund.
The only problem would be is, right now, you know, you have property tax revenues and other fees collected revenues that you're using to buy the vaccine until you get reimbursed for it.
Right, well, maybe sometime next year, we can sit down.
I mean, I think it's something to look at and see if other counties do that that way, and whether it would be better representative of what your budget truly is.
Truly is, right, yeah.
That would be great, we'll put it on for a few months to look at that.
But at this point, I feel like if you leave our budget alone now, as it stands right now, with Carolyn, or with Paula coming in and losing Dr. White's insurance and other things that are out there, I really feel like we're going to be-
Well, Matt's going to bring in a bunch of money, he already told us he was.
That's me.
I'm depending on that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We'll do it together, we'll, yes, we will.
Right, but I do, I really feel like we can stay within our amounts, I really do.
Terry, with Terry, with all these numbers that have been thrown about the last couple of months concerning the health department, how many, with all these, how many of these estimates and unknowns can you really put into hard numbers? Hard numbers is what we really need to work with.
Well, the ones I was just talking about, that's hard numbers, because I've got my list down at the office on who Medicare still owes me for, and it is, it's over $20,000, it's still out on that. The Medicare, or the Medicaid, I'm sorry. We can see in our immunization clinics how many Medicaid kids come in, and you're probably talking, what, 75% if not 80?
Yes.
You take each one of those kids that we know are going to come back, and we can deal back bill. If we get this going, we can back bill. You take those kids and times it, times eight, is it per shot?
Per shot.
They get four shots, that's $24, or 32, I guess.
30, you know.
Yeah, $32 that we would collect. And that's not a hard, I mean, it's not a hard number, because we don't know how many Medicaid kids will come in, but-
We took that data off of, you know, we have this system that's a registry through the state department of health, we can run all sorts of reports on it, and we can pull from whatever date we want, from January 1 to December 31 of last year, I can tell you exactly how many Medicaid kids we did. I can tell you how many shots we gave, and it's just a matter of pulling that data and multiplying it out times the administration fee, that's how we got our numbers. That is not counting the insurance kids when they come in, that we get no revenue from. We can bill on the vaccine end, we can bill on the administration end. For the Medicaid kids and the uninsured, we can only do on the administration end, so.
We don't buy that, we don't buy that vaccine, that vaccine is provided to us, so it's just the administration fee.
I can see how that'd be, I guess, the best method to make an estimate.
Right.
But still an estimate, and that's why, you know, when you folks were here last month and with the sanitarium, there, none of this has happened yet, see?
And I can speak for Dr. White, who was at a health officers' meeting, they get together periodically, and one of the topics that they discussed were all of the health departments that were going to go to this billing system to try to generate revenue, we're not unique in that. Every health department across the state is having this issue of trying to generate some sort of, you know, revenue to be viable and all that. Now, you know, this can help support a sanitarium salary. When you look at public health, you kind of look at it like this, a lot of what Matt does overflows into what I do or what Paula will be doing- it like this. A lot of what Matt does overflows into what I do, or what Paula will be doing, a lot of what I do. We do a lot of coordination together on lead inspections and unhealthy homes, and, and so, you know, the revenue generated from immunizations that can support the public health nurse salary, but the sanitarium salary, it just, yeah, overall, just, we kind of overlap in public health.
Well, I see that. Can you understand, though, that with all the estimates, the estimates and the unknowns that people are involved in this, why I felt last month's decision to reinstate the sanitarium was a little bit hasty or premature decision based on the amount of information I had at that time?
Well, I think you can, you can look at the experience that, that we have had over the years in seeing these things come about. We kind of observe trends that are happening. We see health departments that have billed that are, you know, a year and a half ahead of us, the health departments who have actual clinics with, with office hours, with well-child checks and all of that. We can see their revenue generating abilities, and, and we're in partnerships with professionals from the CDC who are giving out grant money to make sure this happens. So, I think, I think your apprehension, um, you know, is understandable. You're trying to learn what we do every day, and you're taking the word of somebody that you never see, because we're down there just kind of doing our thing and, and all of that. But I can assure you that, talk to any house department, big, small, whatever, and this is the way things are going. See, you see what put out a grant and allow eighteen counties, you know, pay for equipment and pay for an entity to credential all of us and get us on board with billing. You know, in lunch hour today, we sat down with a, with a web-based application to understand how we're gonna be doing this and what we're already doing, so...
We'll do that on...
It's helping. I, I know you're apprehensive, but I'm, I'm living this. It's happening.
I'm, my biggest apprehension is that we're going in 2013 in the red again, the way we want to do this year. If we don't turn it around in 2013, we have maybe a progress. Is your, is it yours and Terry's contention now that you can support the sanitarium and the part-time?
Absolutely.
Sanitarium and...
Yes.
And stay in the black?
Yes.
Yeah, according to, just by us going by the Hubble study, which causes the nine hundred dollars we could have, we're gonna be, how much after that?
Well, it said fourteen right off, and now we're over the bound.
We're over fourteen thousand dollars under what the Hubble study said we needed to be at on our, our levels, I guess.
Need to wow for a little bit of cushion for, we, everybody was kind of figuring that we would have maybe a five percent increase in our group health insurance. Five percent and eighteen point six percent.
That's a lot.
You'll know when you get your, your paycheck, it's gonna weigh in.
The Hubble allowed for ten percent, so we're fourteen thousand dollars under that.
Wow, yeah.
Well, and then, remember, you're gaining from losing my salary and, and getting a little bit, you'll get that that you didn't know you were gonna have before tonight. And then we haven't even talked about the revenue generating ability that, that this program...
The fourteen thousand under doesn't, doesn't affect any, any of the money that we're talking about here.
And that first year, we'll be able to retroactive bill for twelve months. All of the Medicaid kids we've done, twelve months from when we start.
The retroactive billing would be a one...
One-time thing.
One-shot deal.
One-shot deal, which would be helpful in setting up that standalone fund when we start to privately purchase vaccine that we don't purchase now for infants and children.
Well, I don't want to be rude, but we better move on.
You're in too big of a hurry to get out of here. This is your last meeting in your life.
Well, I'm looking to talk.
It may not be your last.
And we're not a third, just a third of the way through this agenda.
All right.
And if they, they convinced me that they can, they're gonna make a sum, so that's up to you guys now on this. Under, under new business...
Well, did we, have, what have you clarified? Have you clarified anything?
Yeah, they're gonna keep the, we're, it's like it is. That's what they said.
We need a motion on that?
I don't know. I just don't know.
It's already in place.
We, we haven't, yeah, it's already in place. We haven't taken in any action either way.
We didn't take any last meeting, which I thought we should, but that was my fault. The only real action we took last month was to reinstate the full-time sanitarium.
That's true. That's exactly right. That's what it said.
And you're, you're telling us that you can maintain...
I actually feel like we can.
See, I pulled her knife out, but she's going on on it.
Tell them, Terry, tell them, Terry, that you retire on January the 2nd.
I don't need that secret, Russ. No, but I do, I feel like, I feel like that we'll be able to maintain ourselves, and we'll not end up in the red come two thousand, December 31st, 2013.
You better not.
No, because you've already gotten settled.
Yeah.
I'm worried about the rest of the year.
I, I really feel like that we can, that we can do it, so...
Terry, I'm not trying to be mean to you or any one of this...
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
No, I know, but...
This is serious, Terry.
If I didn't feel like that we couldn't do it, I, I would say that. But I really feel like we'll be able to maintain. And if we see in the, in three quarters of a year, or, or, we'll do something about, we'll do something about it.
Well, we'll take a good, hard look at your first six months of the year, see how you...
Give's one six months. I will say that...
Yeah, I'm sure.
Ron, are you the only one leading off the council?
Yes.
Right there, my new replacement.
I know, I know. It's been a, it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, even though I niced you.
Even though you niced me, we'll leave on it.
We fixed her up.
Yeah.
Well, it's been a pleasure here, too, Terry. I'm not, I don't want you to hold anything against us.
I will.
Well, let's move on. Except the Janu, new business, except the January meeting. What did you want to...
Uh, please.
Pardon?
January meeting?
Yes.
It falls on January 1, which is the holiday.
Our day, so we need...
January 8.
The first Tuesday.
No, we can't.
Can't.
I'll be gone that week.
Unless you wanna hold it by yourself.
We can have a meeting without him, can't we? Might not have four of them. I think we need meat on the 2nd, which is Wednesday.
Salute.
We got a motion, and they're gonna, it's gonna be on the January the 2nd. We got that. Now, B, tax abatement for Lake Inn, uh, Lake Well, or...
We got Diane.
That is Diane.
Yeah, that's good for me.
This is just a preliminary resolution. I put all the information in everyone's boxes to set a public hearing for Lake Innovative for January the 2nd.
January the 2nd?
Yes. It'll be at your next meeting, your first meeting in January.
Okay, is that all you need?
Preliminary hearing?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it is, this is just the preliminary and to set the public hearing.
Wasn't that in our mailboxes last week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll pick it up.
He'll be hiring one additional employee. He currently has sixteen employees.
Have you got an extra copy of that?
Um, I did not bring an extra one.
Okay. Well, we're, now, give, I wanted to give it tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
That's the one, 'cause it's gonna be on, he's gonna be here for that meeting. On the 2nd, so he can... Is that all you need, Diane?
I just need a motion to approve the resolution.
Oh, you need a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
All right, that might help.
And the resolution's just approving the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the grant budgets and 144.
Well, okay.
That's just on the grants, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
Yeah. In other words, that's like, well, like Carolyn's.
What they had submitted, see, you, council had not been doing this for some time, and we really needed to be doing this. Um, I have one here for, um, community corrections, and what I've done under their salary. They left their salary altogether in one line and pay everybody's salary out of there. I've taken and crossed this out, approved per the 144s, but you're still approving this amount, but the full-time employees and the part-time employees can't make more than what's in the 144. Um, then I, then here's their 144 here, the only adj, that was submitted by Michelle Dudley. The only correction I needed to make here was there is a new facilities officer supervisor, yes, that, no, Lance is up here as assistant director, which, that's his new salary and that's starting salary, but we set that at twenty-four thousand, and I made that correction in there. So, you're not going to be paying, you can't pay anyone on these line items more than what's on the 144s. The rest of their budget has already been approved by the state, so I don't see where you need any corrections there. I'll send that down if you wanna look at that one.
Or we need, you agree we need to sign this?
Yeah.
There on the back?
If you, if you approve it, you might make a motion all at once. In going through this, the other thing, um...
Didn't change that.
When you took for the CASA volunteer coordinator, you took that job out of the county general budget. Well, the other half of that job was, was in, was through the grant. So, the grant has in here and is approved for eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four for the volunteer coordinator. So I didn't know whether you wanted to leave money in there and then pay a volunteer coordinator what the starting salary was for, you know, like part-time in the courthouse, um...
Can we do that? I mean, we'd have to match that, right?
Um, no, their match is in kind and, well...
I mean, that was my understanding.
Diane, are you still back in?
Yes, I am.
Um, the CASA, I mean, not CASA, but the Victims Assistance Grant, you know, they cut the CASA side of this out of county general, but we still have the other half of it in here for, uh, in the victim assistance grant. Does this have to be matched by the other half that was in county general?
Yes, yes.
So if you take it out of one, you have to take it out of the other?
Yes.
Okay. But you still have information coordinator in here as a part-time?
Yes, she, she makes just under that. Okay, just with no benefits.
Thank you. That clarified that. Okay, I'll say that. So, there's this one, um, what you approved at your last meeting was the victim, was the CASA victim assistance director in the break, and, and I did have a 144 to approve here. Let's go ahead and do it with the other salaries that we already have here, and I made that correction here to go along with what you did at your last meeting.
What we got here.
The fifteen, one eighty-seven.
Now, you need a motion for...
Well, we still have more grants if you wanna do them all at once.
I know, I don't mind all of them.
There's that one, if anyone wants to look at that. Uh, there's a CASA, there's a small CASA grant from the state that is eight thousand five hundred ninety-five. Um, that has no salaries in it, and that has also already been approved by the state.
But that is for, they can use it.
Yeah. Well, doesn't, it's for other things other than...
Salary.
Salaries. Then the local health maintenance, um...
Health maintenance.
Since those are all paid as part-time, she just has a month's sum out in the grant to pay on salaries, and, uh, here is the 144 that goes along with that, and I've added the R and Medicaid coordinator in twenty sixty-four. So here's that that goes with that.
Them two go together.
Yeah. So you've had community correction, victim assistance, CASA, local health maintenance.
There's four of them.
Yeah, and I think that's... Terry.
Terry?
Yes.
We didn't have one on the, on that bioterrorism grant. We don't have, because it, it kind of reset itself mid-year, and we didn't even know what it was gonna be.
Right, right. Yeah, we're just taking these out of this. I know this is kind of off the subject, too, but is there a 144 there for Matt? I brought one, I had brought one up.
No, I, what I did was, um, I have it right here, and we had had him in it. I will put him back in here.
Okay, so he's all right.
What is his, now, you didn't have an, can you come up here a second? I just wanna get this done.
I do, too.
Now, I mean, this is our last meeting.
You better stay on that side of it.
Yeah. Um, what is Matt's current salary? Because this is thirty-four forty-four. So we're gonna add him back in the back, 'cause I'd already went through this, and then we have this, and then we have... Uh, I added it back in on here, and the other one I need to check. Okay. But that's not, that's in the regular budgets, not in the grant budget.
Let me, let me ask you a question. Maybe I missed it someplace, but let me be, if you can straighten me out here. On this, um, community corrections, their budget, we got part-time health, three different prices, right?
On community corrections, yes, because some of them are at starting and some have been, them have been there a few years and have gotten, you know, increases, just through the standard increases the county's given.
Okay, so we're, okay.
All of their, now, they may have, I don't know whether they had a caseworker at part-time pay.
They got some on here that, on their budget, there's a, you're picking up a little bit more money than what our starting salary, I get, is this a, some of these people must have starting salaries here. Is that right?
Are you looking at community correction?
For instance, we got, we got a part-timer that they got in their budget at ten twelve, and we got a part-timer over here at nine sixty-two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably because of the, of how long they have been here.
Maybe less money. Is that right?
I see what you're talking about. I know.
I'm not falling pounds and ball here, so... Their budget, ten twelve.
Well, nine sixty-two, I think it's the starting salary.
So he's new guy.
And then this was, see, a quarter raise, when you're given a quarter raise, and I, these... Well, and the, and these guys have been here longer, so. I don't know what the, I hadn't been really making contact with the last raise. See, this one is a quarter, that was the last raise that was given. But then when we had that other, I think there was, what's the difference between these two? Fifty cents, so that's two quarter raises have picked up there. And then this is different because it's part-time case manager. And we spent that starting salary last year at 12:08 an hour for the case manager. Latest due map, sure, I don't know about that. Yeah, that's theirs, yeah, and that's, that's where I added, did that come back at you or does that?
Yeah, that's okay. We've already discussed that. Well, we got four of them or five of them? Four, Emma. Four of these to make a motion.
We have community corrections, victim assistance, CASA. And local health maintenance.
Put your pleasure on there, we've got four of them. You can't straighten them out tonight.
You can straighten them out in six months.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll move that we approved the salary 144s for the community corrections grant, CASA grant, victim, victims assistance grant and the local health maintenance grant. Okay, now wait a minute. What'd you say? We've got an issue.
You want to speak to that?
We have an issue.
Last year, when Bill Newkirk retired, the commissioners offered Billy Wayson, what was it, Billy? How much per week? Three hundred?
Three hundred a week.
Three hundred a week. And it came out to around $4,300. Because the 144s were already set for last year, it has to go on his first pay in 2013. That was fine. According to the state board of counts. And that was fine with the community corrections. I got Mike Lloyd and Dalton Haney, both from DOC, their approval to do it. So we just, I just reminded Debbie that, make sure it gets added in so that I can pay Billy that first out of the community corrections grant, the 4,300 interim pay for director of community corrections.
Well, if he wants to take his salary suffer or something like that.
I think that was, I think the commissioners approved, well, I think commissioners kind of gave their approval and so did council.
We did. I remember when we made it.
We just didn't get him paid because.
I can't tell you what date it was.
Because state board of accounts said we couldn't pay him because we couldn't change that salary ordinance.
Right. I just want to make sure that as you're doing community corrections, that that gets set in tonight so that we can, I can pay him that first.
I don't think it's on there.
No, it's not on there. She wants it on there. Well, if he's going to get paid, we'll have to pencil it in tonight.
Yeah.
Is that it, way in there, Mark? Well, thanks to Diana for reminding us. I knew, I knew that we had approved paying the sheriff, the stipend for running community corrections. I didn't know that he hadn't been paid yet.
No, state board of counts wouldn't let us do it in 2012.
So it has to be paid out of the 2013 grant?
Correct, and I do have approval from the grant.
Which it, that grant is like 12 paid 13 because it, it starts July and overlaps.
Yeah, it's on a fiscal year, not a calendar year.
Okay, well, if he gets paid, then that amount's going to have to be penciled into this.
And the amount's $4,300. I keep it on a post-it note right.
It's going to have to be penciled in here before we, before we approve it, all right? Pencil her in there. Well, I better let the county auditor do that, see how she wants to list it.
See, I could, for 144s, and you know that amount in the community corrections grant that they have approved for salaries will never get off of that number. You know, remember from la, from last year.
Their salary has increased since the last year.
We've got a motion and a second.
About 15,000 a pay.
I need a motion, I don't know if we've got a second or not.
Yeah, I have a second.
Jim's second.
Yeah, Jim's second. Is there any more questions?
Here it is.
All, all in favor, first, ten.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's done, you penciled it in. That's on the, that's on the grant budgets. Now we have to approve the salary ordinances. We're not halfway done. No, we're not halfway done.
Here are what, what I did with these. I took and laid it right down beside what you approved and that's what I put in here. The only thing, I added Matt's pay back in and I also need to go into the probation and add a probation officer's salary back in also. Hold on a second.
Why, we never received.
Yeah, yeah, last meeting. The probation officer.
Yeah, okay, the judge, here comes the judge, yeah.
And I left it in there, it is in there. So what, what these represent that you would be approving and that is on, you could approve that along with that first salary ordinance that. Get your salary.
First salary ordinance. For here, this one here?
No. They're tight, here we go, I have her mind later here. This first salary ordinance is to fix the compensation of county employees pursuant to Indiana Code to be effective January 1 of 2013. And then being ordained that the attached forms 144, which are these, represent and embody the decision of the Bay County Council fixing the compensation of county employees pursuant to the code. And they are incorporated in then as a part of this. So what these are, what these are, match, match the county budget that was approved. Plus I've added back in the probation officer that you noted in last month. And I've also, and I've also added back in the full-time sanitarium that you approved last month. So that matches that, so. You know, when you're approving these 144s, then you're also approving this salary ordinance that goes with them.
Okay, put your pleasure. Make motion, we approve them.
Second.
Who's seconding? We got two seconds, Mark Shirley. Shirley is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we've got that down, now we're down to.
And then that is the question, do you want to sign?
Each one of them?
I know, I hate it, but, you know, you do it every year, don't you? You're going to, yeah, so if you want to hold on and put those in.
We'll just have to wait until the meeting.
Yeah.
Now, what, this health insurance, what?
Here, we need to do starting salary ordinances.
Oh, we haven't got them?
Yeah, there's also two. One is, the first one is the salary ordinance for all, you know, for everything that's all full-time employees, their starting salary. The second one is a starting salary ordinance is for part-time only. Now, the only difference you might see in this one from last year, I've added in. I've added in community corrections director and assistant director. You know, I probably should add that 24,000 that you said is the starting salary for the facility supervisor. Which we can, we can put right in here if, if you want to. We might as well not go back and revisit those if something changes, is my thought. We currently don't have. And I can add that back in.
Well, we need another motion in a second for this. Starting salaries.
Do we, do we need to amend this before we?
I put in 24,000 right here for adding that one. Now, the other thing we need to, did we decide you were doing one-time only on Paula and not changing the starting salary?
What do we do?
Okay, that's fine.
What'd you do with the, the part-time?
Hi.
What'd you do with the part-time?
It's, the part-time is here.
Judd. Is it 15, what you're starting her out at?
What's that?
Judd, Carolyn Judd.
Oh, over here?
That's a 20.
Yeah, we'll need to add that to 20, $20 and. 64 cents. Which is for.
2064.
Yeah, under the local health grant, it has a separate thing.
I've got a motion, I need a second on this.
Did you get the motion?
I'll second. Jim, Jim, then the motion is. Dale second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Jim, and who's seconding it?
Dale. Now, is that all the ordinances? Right here?
Yeah. The health insurance, I think, that was covered by what, yeah, by what Barton told you about.
Now we've got additionals. County general, jail, Bill and Wayson.
Holy cow. I don't even remember why I came over here.
That's all right, goodbye.
No, I'm jogging my memory right now. Okay, we have. We have some additionals. You guys tell me where you want to start or what you have in front of you, because I have them in no particular order.
Well, we got, our first one's county general jail.
Okay.
For the medical.
For the medical. I told you guys about the, the medical bill last month when I was over here for the inmate. I can't give the name and details, I can pass this around if you want to see it. He was taken up to Methodist and spent four days up there and then he passed away. So that bill was a total of 93,000, 93,820. We negotiated and that happened on Christmas Day of last year. So we're almost at a year passed, so we've been arguing and bickering for the last year over the price and we're down to 12,990 some dollars.
I'd say you're doing a pretty good job, Billy.
That's taken about 20 phone calls and a bunch of, we're not paying that, that's what I was telling, that's too much. And then it went from 75 cents on the dollar to 50 cents on the dollar. But even they jumped down a quarter, I thought, oh, it'll come down at least another quarter. But we, we put that, we got it down to 12,900. That's why we're asking for 13,000. That leaves me about 14,922 in that budget for the rest of the, for the rest of the month. I don't know what else to do with it other than this, it's been almost a year. It's like I told you last month, if you don't want to pay it this month, we'll wait till January. But there's going to come a point where they're going to get aggravated and say enough. And they've been great, I mean, they have put up with it for a year, so. That's what we're asking for the additional for that, it's a, gotta pay it, it's the law. We've put it off this long, so it's sort of up to you guys to decide where you want to go at this point.
Put your pleasure. Hey, I want to thank him for saving us the money.
I recognize that.
I'll make a motion that way, pay it.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And you did, you did do.
That's, that's a, that's a big one there.
Yes, it is.
Especially with an out-of-county, I mean, our hospital's been great, but the deal with the out-of-county ones that really doesn't care about Little Oak Bay County, I was sort of shocked, so. The next one, we have an additional out of misdemeanor fund. That's the fund that's set aside and is paid out of misdemeanor judgments. That money gets re-put in there about twice a year and that's used for, to maintain the jail and help with those prisoners. I'm asking for 4,720. We want to purchase a new meat slicer, the one we have is 20-plus years old. And new food trays. The food trays that I looked at, I looked at several different types. I've got some that they told me that will be there after we're all long and gone, so. I think it's a good investment, trying to get the three-bid thing that's required when you're over a certain dollar limit is sort of tough because not everybody has this kind of trays. So you're trying to get the three bids on apples, oranges and pears. They're all fruit, but not all the same. So these trays, with a company called Cooks, that's who we've dealt with before, they're out of Illinois, they've been great. But I'd like to get that money out of there and purchase those two items and upgrade some of that part of the kitchen. We've got another part to deal with that we'll talk about in a minute. But that is out of the misdemeanor fund. There's probably, I don't know exactly what's in there, but there's probably 50,000 in there for that, for those kind of projects. We've taken quite a bit out and for these kind of stuff, but I want to move forward on this part and work on one step, one phase of the kitchen.
I'll make it to improve the meat slicer and increase.
Okay, back it, yeah, we got Mark and Jim. Put the motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next one is for a project that has been waiting for, gee, many Christmases, 10 years. And that is a new dishwasher. The dishwasher we have has been out of service for probably the last 10 years, I would guess. We're burning up the, the cleaning supplies to take care of the sanitizing, Mark?
I'll go ahead and move to approve that. I know how bad it is.
It is bad, I did use the three quotes on that, so I would be more glad to pass them all out if you guys want to see them before I go any further, or, I've got, I'm just, now, I've got the best one. I got the best one right here. So it is the cheapest and it is the best in value. One company was, too many numbers. One company was 10,318 just for the dishwasher, another 2,500 to install, plus 1,000 for incidentals. Not sure what incidentals are, but. The other company that I want to use is 10,682. That is to come in, tear out all the rusted cabinets, tear out all the other, the shelving that's in there, remove the old dishwasher, install the new one and wrap stainless steel around the new tables that get it, the dishwashing tables that get attached to it. Another bid was 12,880, not installed. Out of all of them that were there, the CT company out of, they're based out of Indianapolis, but they have a place in Newcastle. They were 10,682, that is the best deal out of all of them that I have. For the people who are questioning shopping local, I tried that and got a bid of $24,000 to install. Half price is no brainer, I'd love to keep the money here, but that's way over the top. And that is what they felt they could do and that's their option, it doesn't matter to me, but. The CT company is the best.
10,000 what?
10,682.
10,682. Well, Mark's already made the motion, we need a second. Jim's seconding. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Billy, we'll probably save that money in dishwashing liquid.
I, I would say it's gonna be close.
Because when they wash it by hand, they just, the other way will be measured.
Yeah.
I think we got into that four years ago.
Right. So if you take the food trays, I mean, we're feeding about 300 meals a day. Because we have 100 prisoners on an average, so we're running 300 meals a day. That's every day of the year. That's a lot of dishwashing, so.
You need a, you got another one here, Billy. Transfer on that thing.
In, in Q building jail.
Yeah, we have the food carts. The food carts that we have are, are 20-plus years old. I took newly-elected Commissioner Fedora over. We took a look at those and showed you some of the stuff that we're transporting that stuff in. The new food cart that I wanna purchase will replace the two that we have that we can't get parts for anymore. It is about $5,000, but it will hold all of the food trays at one trip. There'll be no more making four trips to the back of the jail to deliver food. It's, it's gonna do what we need it to do. It's not completely heated, but it's well insulated to keep the food warm. That's gonna cut back maybe some of our energy costs, but it's gonna replace those two heated food trays that are, that we can't even get parts for anymore. I can't even believe they even roll, but, but they do. So one of the handles has, they got a duct tape about this big around, so the doors stay shut and it's really just, it's just not very pleasant to look at. Some of you've been over to see it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fedora's seen it. Can't be too impressed when you look at it. So it's time, it's time to replace that stuff.
And some of that's gonna be used on the dishwasher, too?
Yeah.
It's all kind of a, we moved what we could and...
Some of that's coming down on jail repair money, so it's not a complete additional for extra, but there's money there to take care of it. The fire controls have been updated and completely replaced. Those were 20-plus years old by courses. We got a pretty good deal on that for about $21,000 for that complete repair. That was about probably two-thirds of some of the other bids we got, so it was a pretty good deal. So with all of these projects I guess completed, it's gonna take our kitchen from where it was high priority in different areas to, down to where now it's sort of, I mean, it's sort of piecework now. We can sort of pick and choose what we wanna try to upgrade and repair. And these have been needed for, you guys have heard us talking about it for a long time, so it's been quite a while.
Quite a while.
Yeah.
What's your opinion? I make motion.
A second.
Make motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you are, Bill.
I have a, I also have a 144.
Well, you got it.
Did we ever do that?
You also have, you also have two transfers in the jail and sheriff.
Jail and sheriff. What's them transfer?
Here, you wanna refer to mine.
Yeah, those were, I don't know, I'll leave this, I guess. I worry about additional. Additionals are the ones I worry about.
That's one we worry about.
Yeah, transfers, that's moving money around. I'm good with that, but additional's one that I don't like doing. Transfers are moving what I already got. We're taking care of paying Brockman's. We're gonna purchase some, we had to get some tires. Remember, it's been, two years ago, we had some money left over and I was able to get a purchase on about 12 tires for the, for a vehicle.
I have it last year, wasn't it?
The year before.
Was it?
We got to stockpile those up, 'cause I got such a deal on it and we used our last set about three months ago. So we weren't, we were able not to have to tap into all our tire money, but we're out of those now. We've had to purchase a couple of sets here at the last, the winter here starting over, so that's sort of what this transfer is, to purchase some tires for those. And that is out of a...
You're using it, taking it for salary.
Yeah, we're taking it out of detectives' pay that we had left over from that. And I have another transfer on to pay Brockman's, which is all of our rubber gloves, the spoons for the prisoners, all of that kind of paper goods comes from Brockman. And that's just another transfer I had for that.
That's all the transfer?
Yeah. Two transfers.
You also have a transfer here, Sheriff, that's from Q building jail.
He already, he did that.
You, we've already did, done that.
Yeah, that was to take care of the food cart.
We kinda did them backwards, 'cause that went with the other jail, I mean, the other kitchen.
Mark made the motion. We need a second. I'll second. Jim seconded on that, on this.
On these transfers?
Yeah, on these transfers.
Oh gosh, you're doing that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's, that is...
That was, Mark made the motion.
Mark made the motion, Jim seconded on the, on the transfer.
Hey, they're ahead of us, Billy.
Now, I think we've got, we've got Billy all, now, we're, we're not down these salaries yet, but we got one up here, this cumulative capital, capital development.
You wanna take the additional for, I had an additional in commissioners' budget.
Oh, I missed that one.
You might take that first.
Yeah, we better.
And, and what that is, is we put $25,000 in the commissioners' budget for the cable TV3 agreement and franchise fees come in and pay that. We've gotten more franchise fees than we have a line item to pay them out of. So this is basically, this isn't actually, we're not spending county general monies. We're spending, we're just use, we're just gonna reimburse cable TV for what we've gotten in Comcast franchise fees.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
And a second.
I move to prisoner.
Okay. Shirley seconded. Dale made it. Shirley seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Now, we'll drop down to this capital development.
And that's a transfer. And what that, what that is for, we wanna move from a three-line item remodeling cost into a four-line item. And the commissioners approved a new financial sys, financial payroll accounting system. And there is money in Q cap. We don't have to have an additional or anything, but we're gonna move from remodeling cost down into computers and software. That way we'll have enough money in there to pay for the software cost of this system. Plus, I think there, I think Ben had another $23,000 in computers to where he's happened to switch the new computers. So he's been able to buy a number of those out of this year's budget out of Q cap. So we've got a lot of bang for our buck out of that, but that'll just allow us to pay that financial software.
You hear that? What's your opinion? Did I understand, David, that, did I read some more of that for the WOW financial software?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be for your office?
It's, it's auditor and treasurer.
Auditor and treasurer. Will it be, is it something that you can just like, it's the same software, just an upgrade, or is it a different company?
It's, it's like going from taking a rock and chiseling on it with a hammer to being able to...
That must be an upgrade.
Go into a Windows-based program. It was a DOS-based program we've been using. So it, it'll allow a lot more functionality.
Make the job easier in the office. Cut back on the people. Does it increase productivity? Yes.
I sure hope so, 'cause I'm losing an employee, too. Everybody keeps forgetting that, so...
I, I move we approve this transfer request. You're gonna move? All seconded. Jim seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Now, Billy.
Okay, go here.
We're down to your...
144.
144.
Yep. We are, I lost a jail, a female jail officer. She went to, got hired Honda. That is number three, I believe. That's went to Honda. So can't really blame her for going. The money's a little better and jail work is sort of tough and takes a different individual to handle that stuff. So she's moved on. We've done some interviews. We got a lady picked out and she's not, she's coming in at the same salary, so there's no salary increase. I'm not asking for any salary increase for that position. So I just need the 144 approved so we can get her in and get started training her and keep us a path for action.
Is that, is she going in to the same line item?
I brought, I knew this was gonna happen. Do it. Ronnie, I bought the... I might add Jim as a, I had him.
I didn't even think. Is she going into a salary with a different line? I mean, is she replacing somebody that was making the starting salary of 22,241?
I believe so.
Then we probably won't even need to approve that.
Quinn was, Quinn was there almost a year or so.
Yeah, and there hadn't been an increase from last year to this, this year. So really, you won't really need to. If it's the same line item at the same salary, if you're just gonna put her into Quinn's spot, so...
So we just wanna make sure we're covering that.
Yeah, we just let them know that, yeah.
So we don't have to have that?
Doesn't sound like it.
Good.
What are you gonna let us know? Got your harness on?
We, we are, yeah.
You already did.
We gotta hire, well, pending this decision, I wanna make sure. We don't like to jump the gun too quick. I wanna make sure, so...
The rules we set for us is you can't hire anyone with a pre-approved 144, right, Sheriff?
Well, the only time that comes into problem is if, if we have not had this meeting, I have to wait a month. There's all these positions to fill at overtime. And as a female, I only have six females working the jail. That's a, that cannot not have females, so, 'cause we have female prisoners. So it's one of those, if I have to wait a month, that really stretches the overtime and start to hit the overtime and it's tough on scheduling. That's sort of the only exception, I would think, so...
So basically, what you'll do is just, not necessarily approve a 144, but approve him to hire.
Yeah. Where we are. I'm not hiring any extra prisoners.
That's sort of like putting the 144.
Well, we don't need...
Yeah, it is, yeah. But you'd need probably, yeah.
Make motion, Dale.
I, I move we authorize the sheriff to go ahead and fill that vacancy.
I'll second it since Dale made the motion.
All favor then.
Aye.
Is that it?
Thank you, Dale.
Thanks, Russ.
Think that's it?
I think that's it, Billy.
Your part was easy.
All right. I just wanna take a minute and present this to Councilman Cox, and I appreciate his support and his dedication to our community and my department. So we're gonna miss you.
Well, I thank you, Billy.
Miss you quite a bit, so...
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now, you'll probably put me, probably put me in jail next time.
Almost shoddy tonight. I expected it to be big, Dale.
If we get out Dale Carter.
I have a good idea.
Get out Dale Carter.
Is this my, that might be my get out of jail. Okay, now, we've already taken care of this cost out here, haven't we?
We have all of that, because we incorporated them in for 144s you're gonna sign, so you're down to patron concerns.
Okay. Mark, you got anything you wanna say?
Here's an envelope for you, too, Mark.
Okay. No.
Shouldn't he have one of those?
Well, he can have mine.
Oh, okay. Well, he's got one here.
Oh, there's next to him?
I got one question.
Okay.
Were you the good, the bad, or the evil?
All three.
He was all three at different times during the day.
That call I got just now, that's the one that put it on there. That's the one that put that song on there for me, my daughter-in-law.
Okay.
She got a job for me, I know, but I haven't answered it yet. The, where the commissioner went out. Has anybody, has anybody else got anything they wanna say?
I do.
Okay.
Ronnie, on behalf of council, I'd like to present you with this plaque for your appreciation of your services for Bayou County Council.
Okay.
That's from the whole council. Big Alan, come here a minute. You're gonna be missed. Alan, on behalf of Bayou County Council, we'd like to present you a plaque for your appreciation. And Alan will be with us. He's already got...
You want his picture, Ron?
Alan, you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Kristin.
Okay.
I'll call you back in just a little bit. I'm in a meeting. Okay. Here, let me get, let me get the plaques off. Yeah, get it, take it to me out of there.
Okay.
There you go. That's your...
Hey, very good.
I can get the camera to work now.
We broke the camera.
Yep. They each get a picture of this, I think.
You'll be missed.
Thank you.
Want your baggies? Alan, you want your baggies and the plaque? Have you got anything you wanna say?
Yeah, just observing.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, I would like to echo everyone else's sentiments that, congratulations on your completion of eight years on this easy little job. And you're gonna be missed. Alan, you've been an excellent county attorney. You're, you're leaving over my objections. I hope that's clear, but I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Once you put this behind you, and now we'll have to find someone to take your place. I hope we can get someone that do have the job you've done for us. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thanks for the opportunity.
And you give change of mind.
You go into a bigger county and Alan, or...
I'm trying to ease the stress a little. He'll be judging more barbecue.
Judging more barbecue.
Need a motion? Well, we, before we adjourn, or we can adjourn, but we've got to...
Yeah, don't wait.
We've got to sign it. We gotta start passing these down and signing them. So we are making a motion.
I'll make a motion and adjourn.
Okay, second. All taken. All in favor?
Aye.
I know, I noted the adjourn. Now, I'll, I'll start, man.